Good evening, welcome to the Springford Area School District Board Meeting. Today is Monday, November 17th, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals intending to make public comments should be aware that they are being filmed. Speakers will be asked to state their name in the area in which you reside before your comment.
Good evening, welcome everyone. Mrs. Schmidt, can we have a roll call, please?
Tonight in person, we have Mr. Lackey, Mrs. Westwood, Dr. Sharma, Mrs. Weingarten, Mrs. Hermans, Mrs. Deardorff, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Wright, and not present is Mrs. Goldsmith.
Thank you very much. As far as announcements go, I have two, one of which is that the Personnel Committee did just meet prior to the start of today's meeting, it's not reflected on today's agenda, but I will make sure, Ms. Schmidt, that we could put it on next week's agenda so we could just give a brief update for the community. And then my second announcement is the countdown is on, it is the second to last meeting for Mr. Jackson if anyone's taking note. Alright, with that said, we're gonna go to Dr. Scanlon, do you have any announcements?
I have no announcements, we just have a number of students out here tonight we'd want to get to and recognize their accomplishments.
Great, wonderful. So, next we'll move on to Public to Be Heard, that can be on agenda items, so if there's anyone that wishes to speak, please approach a podium with your name, township, or residence, as well as the agenda item for which you are referencing. Seeing as though no one is approaching the podium, we'll move on to our first presentation, and we will welcome back to the podium from last month, Mr. Jones, our House Principal, and Dr. Edwards, our 10 to 12 Principal.
Hi. So, last month, we had the fortune of recognizing our National Merit semifinalists and our National Merit Committed Students, and I'm not even kidding, 48 hours after that meeting, we, our office got a note from the National Merit Program that said, "Oops, we missed one." And so, we found out that after that meeting, that we had another student that qualified to be a National Merit Committed Student. So, we wanted to bring her here tonight to recognize her as we recognized all of the other students at the program. So, as a reminder, Springford Senior High School recently received word from National Merit Scholarship Corporation that one additional senior student has been named a Committed Student in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program. As noted in the mailing from the National Merit, standing in competition cannot be determined at this time to include the student in the list of Committed Students that were mailed to Springford in September. We are pleased to announce that senior Arithana Sahu joins 27 other classmates who were named as Committed Students and were recognized at the October work session. National Merit Committed Students have been placed among the top 34,000 students in the country who were entered in the 2026 competition by taking the preliminary SATs in their sophomore year. Committed Students are scholastically talented seniors who have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. We are extremely proud of all 28 of our Committed Students and would like to present Arithana Sahu with the certificate provided by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation.
And Ms. Hermans, if we could ask you to represent the board for a photo op, and I'll be happy to join with the administration, and we'll keep this thing moving, okay? Thank you.
Congratulations once again, and just to echo Dr. Edwards and Mr. Jones, you know, the Committed Students represent the top 2% nationwide, so amazing, amazing job. With that said, we have other students to recognize tonight, so I'm gonna welcome Athletic Director, Mr. Miscavige, to the podium.
Thank you. Well, we had a very successful fall season. As you can tell, the noise level coming down the hallway for this meeting, it tells you how many good teams we had this year. We're gonna first start with our Springford Girls Soccer Team. The Girls Soccer Team finished the regular season with a record of 14 wins, three losses, and one tie. They defeated Phoenixville by a score of 6 to 0 in the Final Four. They then defeated Owen J. Roberts by a score of 5 to 0 in the finals to secure the Pac-10 Championship. Their season ended in the PIAA District One Fifth Place Playback Game versus the eventual PIAA Champion Central Bucks East. Congratulations to the Girls Soccer Team, their coaches, Head Coach Blake Hornbuckle, and Assistant Coaches Taylor Newhart and Kelly Kleepack. Congratulations. Next, we have our Varsity Football Team. The Football Team had an inauspicious start to the season, opening with four tough non-league opponents and were sitting after four weeks at 0 and 4. The team and coaching staff showed resilience and turned things around, won their next five games, including a win over our rival, Orange and Brown. The team earned the Liberty Division Title and a berth in the Pac Championship Game versus the Frontier Champion, Upper Perk. The team secured the Pac Title with a 14 to 10 victory. Congratulations to the Football Team and their coaches, Head Coach Mike Palmer, Assistant Coaches Gary Rodenbaugh, Jim Mick, Steve Entiman, Gary Hopkins, and Chad Strickler. Felt like I was in the locker room there. Okay, our third and final team of the fall, the Girls Volleyball Team. Girls volleyball started the season with the PIAA Championship Match loss to eight-time Champion North Allegheny, and were determined to get back to that position. They finished the regular season with a record of 20 and 0. They defeated Potts Grove in the Pac Final Four and met rival Pope John Paul for the third time this season, and defeated them three sets to one to secure the school's first Pac Championship. They were then the second seed in the PIAA District One Tournament and defeated Downingtown West, Council Rock South, Garnet Valley, and finally Unionville, all by identical scores of three sets to zero to secure the school's first PIAA District One Championship. They then went into the PIAA Tournament and defeated Upper Dublin three sets to one, Emeas three sets to zero, and Bishop Shanahan in the state semifinal, three sets to one, to earn a trip back to the PIAA Finals where they met Pine Richland on Saturday. The Rams lost the first set of the match, but stormed back to win the next three to secure the school district's first PIAA Championship, and finished the season with a 30 and 0 record. Just a couple of quick nuggets of the season. During a stretch during the season, the girls won 55 consecutive sets in a row, and ended the season winning 90 sets and only dropping eight, which is a phenomenal, phenomenal record. Congratulations to the Pac District One and PIAA Champion Girls Volleyball Team and their coaches, Head Coach George Fuller, Assistant Coach Steph Lawrence, and Chris Allender. Congratulations, team. Thank you very much, we look forward to seeing you all in the winter.
Thank you, Mr. Miscavige. I have to say that as everyone is walking out of the room, this has been one of the most amazing fall seasons that I can remember, I don't know if anyone else can remember on the board, in such a long time. I feel like the Girls Soccer Team, I mean, they've always been very strong, but I would say like over the last two, three years, they've really, and then this year especially, really has, you know, shown up at the games and performed exceptionally well. Football, to come back from 0-4 and run the table like they did, is what being an athlete is all about. It's the resilience, it's the grit, and then of course, volleyball. I mean, I've, I know, we went to a couple of games, and they're just so fun to watch, and to have that record, Dr. Scanlon, you were talking about how impressed you were.
Yeah, first of all, Springford is a school district that provides many opportunities for students to participate in after-school and extracurricular activities, and that is, that is good for students, and it is great for them to be involved. I know we recognized three teams tonight, but there are many other teams where students are participating, and the fact that they're out there participating and you've got coaches working with them as mentors for these young student athletes is just simply amazing. But those three teams had a great season, and that volleyball team, we were talking a little earlier about that, I don't know if they realize just how good they are, or were, as their season is over now, but they were in the state championship game last year to get back there again, it's so much work, but to win it and go 30 and 0, that might go down as one of the, one of the best 3A state volleyball champions in the history of the PIAA, so they had an awesome season, and they will be talked about for many, many years, and thanks to the coaches and the parents for supporting all of our student athletes.
Tax dollars well spent.
Alright, well, let's move on then. We're gonna turn it over to Mr. Drover and Ms. Gupta for our November Student Rep Report.
Alright, good evening, everyone. I want to just quickly, from my part, extend a sincere congratulations to the Girls Volleyball Team, the Girls Soccer Team, and the Boys Football Team for all their incredible achievements. I know the district is very, very proud, and I know how much hard work these students put into their activities. So, moving into our November Student Rep Report, we're gonna start off with the past events. So, we had Unity Day on October 22nd, the first quarter ended on October 29th. We had Halloween parades for all elementary schools, the 5th, 6th, 7th Grade Center on October 31st, and then students had off on November 4th for Election Day. We had a community forum on November 12th, and then we had the Fall Play Gold Card Showing on November 12th at 4:00 PM. The AMC Math Test was also on November 13th, and then the Fall Play happened on November 13th, 14th, and 15th, all at 7:00 PM, and then the Fall Play had a matinee on November 15th at 1:00 PM. And I've talked to so many students, I unfortunately was not able to go to the play, but everybody that I talked to was enamored by how incredible the play was and how much hard work all the students put into it. So, I just want to extend a congratulations to all the directors and student actors that put so much time and effort into it. And so now, I'm gonna hand it over to Jason for our future events.
Good evening, everybody. For our future events, we have American Education Week from November 17th to the 21st. We have parent-teacher conferences going on from November 24th and 25th. Fall Break starts on November 22nd to November 30th. The School Board Reorganization Meeting is on December 1st. Keystone Testing is happening from December 3rd to the 11th. The Winter Concerts, we have Winter Orchestra for grades 7 through 12 on December 9th, and the Choral Concert on December 12. ACT Testing is happening on December 13th. The Winter Band Concert is also on December 16th for grades 7 to 12. Winter Break is not too far away, December 24th to January 4th. The Class of 2027 Parent FPC Presentation is on January 14th. The district will be closed on January 19th for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Midterm exams are from January 15th to the 21st, and the end of Quarter Two is not too far away on January 21st.
And then just some quick reminders, please, everybody continue to read the Weekly Update for district-wide news. For all students, keep up with your weekly assignments, and then have a wonderful Thanksgiving break for all those families that are traveling, safe travels, and please just take some time to spend with your family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. As far as the Fall Play, Mrs. Westwood, I know you went there, any, any commentary or observations from, because I was, unfortunately, my ticket, my husband and daughter did go, but my ticket went unused because I was sick, so.
My daughter and I went, and we really enjoyed it. I think it was a lot of fun, I think everything you said, just, you know, seeing the show, the actors, it was really, really a great show. So, if you didn't see it, I'm sure there's more coming in the spring, I know we have the musical coming, but it was a really nice show.
Yeah, they always do a lovely job, so congratulations to them. And then the one thing I did want to say is I did have the opportunity to attend Spring City Elementary Veterans Day Celebration. I've attended the middle school one in the past, I know Mr. Cromley, who's in our audience, also was there, and, you know, had come up to me at one of our committee meetings and said just how genuine and heartfelt it was, and I felt that too. So, just want to say, great job to all the students at Spring City Elementary for their performance. So, thank you.
One comment, just to add to the Fall Play, I did get the opportunity to attend that, and one comment, it was just so good that I was looking for my Netflix remote to fast-forward the 15-minute interval, so I was so excited to see it, so it was just so hard to wait to see the remaining part of it. It was extraordinary, every single actor did a great job. I can't believe, you know, we, we do it like, during the fall and spring, we should do it every other month. It's such a great opportunity to sit back and see these actors do these wonderful plays, it's amazing.
Thank you, thank you. Dr. Scanlon, anything else?
It's just another, another great opportunity for students here. The performing arts are a wonderful thing for creativity and teamwork, and thanks again to all of, all the staff and the parents who supported our students to pull up that production.
Great, thank you both. Alright, moving on, Mrs. Goldsmith is not here, so we're gonna save policy for next week. We'll move on to Mr. Lackey for Curriculum and Technology. Oh, I'm sorry, did I, did I forget the best committee? I'm sorry. The best committee, Abby Deardorff in Extracurricular.
Thank you. The Extracurricular Committee met on November 5th. We had an athletics update from Mr. Miscavige about participation in our fall sports, and then we had two clubs present, Rampage and Ramoires. Rampage is the official student newspaper, the students provided an overview of their tasks under the advisement of Mr. Moser. There's four issues that are produced annually focusing on news headlines, school events, and opinion pieces. This publication is entirely student-run with an active staff of approximately 30 students, led by a student editor and various content editors. This team manages all aspects of production from story development to graphic design and layout. Annual subscriptions are available to the school community for $10, and all content is also accessible on their digital website. And then we also had students from Ramoires, which is Springford's annual literary, literary magazine, which is advised by Ms. Reagan. Ramoires is published once a year and is described by its members as an artistic journey. Unlike the newspaper, each issue is developed around a central theme, and a dedicated team of student editors spend the year developing this theme, curating student-submitted stories and artwork. Submissions are open to the entire student body, and Ms. Reagan's creative writing class is are open to the entire student body, and Ms. Reagan's creative writing class is also a key source of content. The students involved emphasize their appreciation for the creative process and synthesis of written word. It was really cool, too, to see the crossover between the students that work on the newspaper, as well as the students that work in Ramoires, kind of their encouragement and fellowship with each other with the, you know, being able to use the different aspects of creative writing versus news writing. So that was really cool. And we also, Dr. Sharma and I got to have copies of both, which are beautiful and, and worth the $10 for their subscriptions. And then we discussed some new business, which you will see in Section 6 Personnel to approve our extracurricular contracts, and then also in Section 7 for finances, MOUs for Homework Club, a cyber school coordinator, as well as an art consultant. Any questions?
If I may add to the, the programs that they, the extracurricular programs that they came up, the students, it was pleasure to hear those students showcase the school newspaper and that magazine. I was generally impressed by their confidence, creativity, and hard work they put into these publications. It was truly uplifting to see students keeping this important form of, form of expression alive, because I, I can tell you, nobody really buys magazines and newspapers anymore. Everyone can do it on, on their cellphones. But it is reminding us that storytelling, journalism, and the arts are still thriving in our school district. So it's very important that our, our students are getting, getting this opportunity. And once again, thank you, and big shout-out to Ms. Moser and Mr., Ms. Reagan for helping us, you know, giving this opportunity to our students.
Thank you, Dr. Sharma. Thank you, Mrs. Deardorff. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, I'm glad that I did have to backtrack a little bit, because Mrs. Goldsmith is online now, so she can give the policy update. Mrs. Goldsmith? Don't make a liar out of me.
Apologies. At this time, we're not able to promote her.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I know she had a, she had a conflict tonight, and she was, and we did send her a link. She's trying to log in, but apparently she is not able to log in as a panelist, but she is able to hear us tonight. So, Mrs. Goldsmith, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being with us. We'll save you for next week. All right. Moving on then to Mr. Lackey, Curriculum and Technology.
Thank you. Curriculum and Technology met on November 10th. Dr. Gardi shared information about two new high school computer science courses being proposed for the 26-27 school year, intro to Python programming and AP Computer Science Principles. Ms. Angelucci gave an update on the ongoing KDA4 math implementation, highlighting continued professional development and support for teachers. Dr. Reinheimer provided an update on the Springfield Cyber Learning Program, including adjustments to the coordinator position to better align with current program needs. Dr. Hilt reviewed the upcoming e-filing, e-rate filing window, and the opportunities available to the district as a result. Lastly, I just want to highlight item 8C on today's agenda regarding final site renewal. This was mentioned in the board memo, but not at committee. We can discuss further when we get there if needed. Our next committee meeting will be scheduled following the board's reorg in December. That's my report.
Great, thank you. And yeah, just to clarify what Mr. Lackey said, that 8C is a deduction point, because some information came up after committee, and administration felt it was important to bring it up, to have the discussion at this meeting. So we'll wait for that when we get to Curriculum and Technology. But any other questions with Mr. Lackey's report?
Yeah, just one comment slash question. I guess it's great to see new programming courses coming up, but also in regards to another science, or another science branch, AI and ML, I'd like to discuss at some point, how can we prep our students to start taking coursework which is related to focusing on more on artificial intelligence and machine learning, which I can say most of the IT industry companies are focusing on. So it will be great for us to give them that exposure as well, to start building projects or taking some coursework, which can prep them for that. It is new in, in the industry as we speak, because the, the degree works or coursework are not really out there yet, but as we start focusing on advancing and adding more courses, we should focus on how we can add more focused on AI and ML.
Thank you, Dr. Sharma. And that will be something, just to bring it up with Dr. Scanlon, and we can talk about that. Okay, moving on. Any other questions or comments? If not, Mrs. Westwood, Finance?
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on November 11th in the district office. We went over ongoing business, so for our executive monthly reports, all these numbers are as of October 31st. For cash, we have 150 million cash on hand. Last month, prior year, was 160.5 million as a reference point. For revenue, our local revenues are expected. State revenues are below expectations due to, at the time, the PA budget impasse. Hopefully that will look much better when we give our next report, since the state budget did pass since our committee meeting. For expenditures, so far year-to-date, which is still rather early, we are as expected. For assessments, assessments have gained approximately 5.1 million since the prior month. It's mostly residential and some commercial offsets. For transfer taxes, we're 52% of the goal achieved in the first four months of the year, and we're 500K ahead of prior year-to-date at the same time. For earned income tax, we're almost 200K ahead of prior year-to-date, reflecting a 4.7% year-over-year growth. For self-funded health insurance, October was a larger claims month, but overall, we're still pacing neutral to our budget for the year. We have our first look with Raskini forecasting a modest increase in claims of about 4.5% for next year compared to 20% forecast last year. High claims are down significantly compared to prior year-to-date. God bless you. For food service, year-to-date, we served approximately 2,000, 215,000 meals versus 211,000 meals last year at the same time. Last year, we saw a dip in our à la carte sales, but they're picking up approximately $5,600 over prior year-to-date, but still around 10K lower than the 23, 24 school year. For the 26-27 preliminary budget update, we'll have a presentation next Monday on this. We'll vote as a reminder to adopt in January. This is mostly an Act 1, kind of check-the-box type of item. And then during the meeting, Mr. Fink reviewed just where we are with the preliminary budget currently. We went over the capital plan update. Mr. Fink reviewed the debt appetite analysis for the three scenarios that were requested at the October meeting as part of the capital plan. For new business, and this was in our board memo, but we have the Springfield Youth Football and Cheer contract was discussed, and we'll be talking about that tonight. For the next meeting, nothing, nothing really new. We will decide when our next meeting is after board reorganization, similar to other committee meetings. Any questions?
I have a couple of comments, if you don't mind. I would like to say a big thank you. This is my final finance meeting, and I would like to acknowledge Ms. Westwood, Ms. Deardorff, and Ms. Hermans. You know, prior to this year, I chaired finance, and it's never easy. And this year was a tough year collectively. But I think you guys did an outstanding job leading this finance committee throughout the year. A lot of naysayers, but I think you guys have done a fantastic job. And a thank you to Mr. Fink for your guidance over the many years, and especially for this year. And I think you guys are in good shape moving into the next four years, based on the elections, which I'll just bring up very briefly. But thank you, Ms. Westwood, for what you did this year.
And I hope Ms. Westwood can chair this for next 10 years, to, to carry out Mr. Clinton's legacy.
Maybe not 10.
Yeah, she only, it has to be 11, at least 11, so she's got another eight more years. All right. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for the kind words. You will be missed, but we'll deal with that next week. All right, moving on to property.
I would do my final meeting next week. There's no objections, Madam President.
I, why would I object with you at this point? No, I am not going to, so. All right. So we'll move on, and we'll save property for next week. MCIU, Dr. Wright.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. The MCIU did not have a meeting in October. They're scheduled not to meet in October, but I can tell you that we did hold our trivia night fundraiser, which was very successful, a lot of fun. I am not good at trivia, and it showed. Our team did not do well. The big winners for the night, and to keep this in mind, were Upper Dublin School District. Their superintendent, Dr. Laurie Smith, showed up with a team of about five school board members, and they had rally towels and everything. They won, I guess they won last year. They were loud and obnoxious. I can say that, because I graduated from Upper Dublin and never got an award like that, recognition like that. But, and they, I would like to challenge this board next year, and whoever, we should put that when we're looking at for new superintendents, as a requirement that they need to come. They also won a bunch of the baskets and stuff, so they, they had a lot of fun. But anyway, it was a successful evening. We do meet again Wednesday, this Wednesday night is our November meeting. And at that time, I am sure that one of the things that we'll be discussing about, discussing is the, the budgets that were approved, because that is a huge relief to the intermediate unit, but the state and the federal. So I'll have something to report either later this month or into the, the next board meeting on that. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wright. And if we see in the free-form comment section of the MCIU survey, it's when we start looking through these applications, trivia, we're going to know who put that in there. That's awesome. All right. Dr. Murray, are you kicking us off with the Assistant Superintendent Report?
Yes, good evening. I would also like to take a minute to congratulate the cast of The Wizard of Oz. I had the opportunity to see, I believe it was the green cast perform on Wednesday. It was a terrific performance. I was impressed by the talent of the actors, as well as the stage crew, directing, and set design. Congratulations to the entire cast and crew for a successful performance. The Golden Rams marching band also wrapped up an incredible season with a phenomenal final performance at Nationals. The band earned a high season score of 93.90 and placed fourth overall in a highly competitive division. Congratulations to the talented student musicians and dedicated staff for their hard work. And finally, the Springfield Year School District's Curriculum and Instruction Office is seeking participation with the Professional Development Task Force. The role of, of the Professional Development Task Force is to advise the district regarding professional development planning. They only meet three times this year to discuss current professional development offerings, additional needs of the district, and future professional development opportunities. The meetings will be held on Google Meet from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Monday, December 8th, February 9th, and April 13th. Please see the weekly update for more information, including how to sign up to participate. And with that, I will pass it off to Dr. Jam Batista.
Thank you. Good evening. Springfield joins public schools across the nation as we recognize the importance of public schools this week during American Education Week. Special thanks to our amazing teaching staff. Springfield teachers go above and beyond for our students each and every day. On Tuesday, our nurses, school counselors, and school psychologist, we will recognize those as the go-to support groups. On Wednesday, to our educational support professionals who keep our schools clean and dry, keeping our students well-fed, and answer roughly 1 million questions a day from parents, staff, and students alike. On Thursday, we thank our bus drivers who safely transport our most treasured small humans to and from school each day. And on Friday, extend a special thanks to the substitute teachers who will step up and step in. So congratulations to all of them. We look forward to that week. Next, for, in the area of special education, I would like to recognize our special education team, who will be presenting during next week's in-service on trauma-informed strategies and IEP and progress monitoring. And then finally, congratulations to the 15 student athletes who signed their college commitment letters already. So congratulations to them. And that's the end of my report.
Yes, clap for. Clapping for the teachers as well. Yes. Thank you, Dr. G. Thank you, Dr. Murray. I mean, yes, I just echo Mrs. Westwood here, just talking about clapping for, you know, all of our unsung heroes, our support staff that do what they do every day, because the school does not run without them. Yep. So thank you. Thank you for recognizing them. Any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I have no report this evening. If we didn't have a budget, I had plenty to talk.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, it's a welcome, welcome change. We have a budget.
It's pretty quiet.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so we're going to move on to what will be the voting portion of our meeting for next week. If we have any questions or comments, please feel free to raise them. We're going to start with Section 5 Minutes, Letters A and B.
I have a question on personnel. So regarding D, the Hiring Authority, I just want to verify that, I see that we have on our resignations an administrator, building administrator. Just want to confirm that that would not be someone that we would be hiring without, over the session with?
Those positions are set to, the resignations are scheduled for the end of the school year, so we're not even, we're not even posting at this point in time yet.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to Section 7, Finance.
I have a comment regarding E, the Springfield Youth Football Cheerleaders. I just wanted to thank Mr. Fink for, we had the opportunity today, at least I, I did take a look at the final contract. And I know that Mr. Fink, and along with, you know, Mr. Lackey and Mrs. Goldsmith and I, had been there at the beginning and gathered a lot of information and kind of dumped it on Mr. Fink to kind of pull it all together. So it was a big undertaking, and I wanted to thank him for the efforts with that, so.
I'm giving you a round of, I'm giving you a round of applause, because I agree. It's a lot when we talk about negotiations and land lease and making sure that our students, you know, although they are not a Springfield organization, they are a Springfield-supported organization, and making sure that they have the facilities they need, because Springfield Youth Football and Cheer do amazing work in our community. So, thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on then to Programming and Curriculum. Now, we do have Letter C, which is a discussion item, but before we go there, do we have questions on A and B? So who wants to kick that off? Is that, Dr. Scanlon?
Sure, I can. Yeah, this was not on the Curriculum and Technology Committee, because we received word after that committee. We have, Final Site is the group that hosts our website, and they, it's up for renewal at the end of the school year, so we were planning to talk about this sometime in January. We found out that we can get a 6% discount if we can get that renewed before January 1st. We do not have a, a public board meeting in December, and we missed the, the Curriculum Committee meeting. It does include ADA compliance for websites now, so I wanted to put that on for, for tonight, to see if the board was okay to move that to the formal agenda for next week.
I have a question. So if, just so I'm understanding correctly, we were going to look at it at the end of the school year, so does that mean we have to find, how does this work? So it's a five-year contract, so we're paying 40,000 before January 1st, roughly?
It's about 41,000 a year, and there's a, give or take a couple thousand dollars in there for each of the next five years, yes.
So I guess my question would be like for, for Mr. Fink, like, just from a financial perspective, like, do we feel good about the unbudgeted 41-ish thousand, if I'm thinking about it correctly?
He's shaking his head yes, for those that can't see him in the back.
Yeah, this is currently budgeted. It's a renewal of the contract. Yeah.
I, yeah, no, I guess I was thinking, it's, so it is budgeted for this year, it's not just budgeted for next year and the next five years. It's not an additional expense then? Because it sounded like we were doing it sooner than expected.
It, it, it's the actual renewal, Mr. Fink, it's the actual renewal of, of the existing contract.
Or paying 41,000 instead of doing it in January.
I don't know, people can't hear what you guys are saying. People. Sorry. Yeah, no, the, I was just trying to seek clarity. I was just trying to say, like, is that 41,000 we plan to pay already or not?
Yeah, I think it's a timing difference. So, you know, at the end of the day, as Dr. Scanlon has said, it's just a renewal. The renewal will, will actually kick in in the July timeframe, and I believe that's when the first payment is actually due. I think the company's looking for clarity that they're going to have it. It's the end of the year, they're trying to make their number probably, and so this is one way they're doing it, is to give a little incentive to, to have folks sign up for the coming years.
And I apologize, thank you, Mrs. Deardorff, for realizing my microphone was not on when I said yes. Just, just the timing of it, so that we can take advantage of the discounts.
I'm very happy to see multi-year contracts. I will leave here feeling good about that, so thank you.
He's pulling out all the good quips. I got to cut these up. These are amazing.
You're not going to say it's simple math?
We already know that.
All right. Thank you. So it sounds like there are no objections? Let me, can I say that? There are no objections with moving this forward for a vote next week? Okay. Thank you. So then we'll move on to Conferences and Workshops, for which we have none. So, Property. Well, it says Conferences and Workshop 9. Property, well, it says Conferences and Workshop 9, and then Property 10, which, Mr. Jackson, we will be waiting eagerly for your report next week, your final one?
Yes, I do have two comments.
Okay, go ahead.
That I've mentioned before, but I want to reinforce this. As we move forward with the capital plan, we've got to make sure we're coordinating all of these planned events, since we don't, at least, I'm not completely sure on the route that we're going to go for the capital plan, because we have a lot of initiatives that are lining up and not showing, not sure where some of these costs come impacting the various schools, that we've got to make sure that we're not putting equipment in the school one year, then the next year, we're taking it out. So that is just for all initiatives as you move forward with the, with the capital plan, that there should be a concurrent review of improvements for the various schools and the determination of what schools would be impacted by the overall capital plan. Thank you.
As one board member agreed, thank you. All right, moving on to 11, Other Business, we have policies up for approval. Surprisingly, no first read. I'm trying to think from policy, but I guess we'll capture that next week with Mrs. Goldsmith when she does her report. It's not usual. Informational Items, we have tenure for your reference, and that takes us to Board Comments. Is there any board comment tonight? Okay, Public to Be Heard, is there any public to be heard tonight? Motion to Adjourn. Thank you.